So it is six o'clock on Thursday, February 24th. And I'm going to call this Lacey City Council Work Session to Order. We have a published agenda. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
And move in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There anyone opposed? Then that motion we ask to carries and we have an agenda. It's a kind of interesting agenda this evening where you have a joint work session with our store commission. And we have a joint work session with our our commission on equity. But to get started, hopefully, we're gonna have a quick presentation on on Black History Month from Hank. Is he on? I see him. If you could unmute yourself there. And we were gonna try to get this this presentation in our last council meeting, but we're happy to have it now and I will turn it over to you, Hank, and we're look forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay, first of all?
You can.
Good. You know, when I was asked by my worship master Melvin Butler Fred, who has large number seventy to give a talk on Black History Month to the Lacey City Council, I pondered with the subject for quite a while, wondering what I might say that would be inspiring while not necessarily be new for the council. What could I say that would not already been said about Black History Month? Then it dawned on me that this month have not always been Black History Month. Therefore, before we can fully appreciate Black History Month of 2022, we need to revisit Negro History Week. Negro History Week was established in 1926 as the second week of February. That week was chosen because it coincided with the birthday of Abraham Lincoln, our sixteenth president birthday on February 12th and Frederick Douglass birthday on February 14th, both of which the black communities had celebrated together since the late 19th century. In other words, the precursor of Black History Month was created in 1926 in the United States when historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a black man of fifty-one years of age, along with the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, announced the second week of February as Black History Week. Please note, I said Black History Week. It wasn't until 1970, twenty years after the death of Carter Woodson, that we as a nation started celebrating Black History Month. Although it was proposed by black educators and the black United Students at Kent State University in February 1969, the first celebration of Black History Month took place at Kent State one year later, January the second, 1970 through February 28, 1970. Six years later, in 1976, Black History Month was created, was being created all across the country in educational institutions, centers of black culture and community centers, both great and small. I remember when President Gerald Ford recognized Black History Month during the celebration of the United States bicentennial. He urged Americans to seize this opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our country and throughout our history, actually. I was stationed at Fort Lewis, Washington at the time, and I recall vividly the Freedom Train that traveled throughout the states coming to North Fort Lewis and staying for quite a while, displaying many of the artifacts that have been generated and saved over the two hundred years of our existence. One thing that was particularly noteworthy for me were the basketball sneakers of Bob Lanier. A professional basketball player were on display, and I thought the twenty-two inch Converse sneakers was quite striking at the time. Incidentally, Bob Lanier played for Detroit Pistons and the Milwaukee Bucks from 1970 to 1981. As you recall, I mentioned earlier that President Gerald Ford suggested that America should seize this opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Listed here with are some of the accomplishments of African Americans that you may not be familiar with and or perhaps may again need to be refreshed. You don't know what you don't know. Here's some black historical facts. For example, did you know that Madame C. J. Walker was America's first woman to become a self-made millionaire? Or that George Washington Carver was able to derive nearly three hundred products from the peanut? Our first black senator. Let me make sure my papers are squared away before I go further. Heavyweight champ, Jack Johnson became the first African American man to hold the world heavyweight champion boxing title in 1908. He held on to the belt until 1915. First African American lawyer, John Murchell Langston, was the first black man to become a lawyer when he passed the bar in Ohio in 1854. And when he was elected to the post of town clerk for Brownshine, Ohio in 1855, Langston became one of the first African Americans ever elected to public office in America. Murchell Langston was also the great uncle of Langston Hughes, famed poet of the Harlem Renaissance. Famous protestors. While Rosa Parks is credited with helping to spark the civil rights movement when she refused to give her receipt to a white man in Montgomery, Alabama in 1955, inspiring the Montgomery Bus Barcar, lesser-known activist Claudette Cohen, a fifteen-year-old schoolgirl, was arrested nine months before Rosa Parks widely disseminated its fame for refusing to move to the back of the bus. When the bus driver ordered Claudette to get up, she said, "It felt like sojourner truth was on one side pushing me down and Harriet Tubman was on the other side pushing me down." She said, "I just couldn't get up." Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall was the first African American ever appointed to the United Supreme Court. He was appointed by President Lyndon Bane Johnson and served on the court from 1967 to 1991. By the way, Brother Marshall was also a Prince Hall Mason. Eminent scientist, George Washington Carver developed three hundred derivatives products from peanuts, among them cheese, milk, coffee, flour, ink, dyes, plastic, wood stain, soap, linoleum, medicinal oils and cosmetics. Our first black senator. Hamrose Revel was the first African American ever elected to the U.S. Senate. He represented the state of Mississippi from February in 1870 to March 1871. First black woman representative Shirley Chisholm was the first African American woman ever elected to the House of Representatives. She was elected in 1968 and represented the state of New York. She broke ground again four years later in 1972 when she was the first major party African American candidate and the first female candidate for the President of the United States. Self-made millionaire, Madame C. J. Walker was born on a cotton plantation in Louisiana and became wealthy after inventing a line of African American hair care product. She established Madame C. J. Walker Laboratories and was also known for her philanthropy. Oscar winner. In 1940, Hattie McDaniel was the first African American performer to win the Academy Award, the film industry's highest honor for her portrayal of a loyal slave governess in Gone With the Wind. First black billionaire. Before Oprah Winfrey and Michael Jordan joined the bibliomania club, Robert Johnson became the first African American billionaire when he sold the cable station he founded, black entertainment television, commonly referred to as BET. First black president. In 2008, Barack Obama became the first black president of the United States. He was also the first African American president of Harvard Law Review in 1990. Population growth. Black population of the United States in 1875, years before Dr. Carter Woodson was born, was 4.8 million people. In 2017, the number of black residents in the United States was 41.4 million. I suspect that when we take the census in 2030, we will find the black population would be much greater than the 41 million reported in 2017. Black History Month theme. Since 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. The Black History Month theme for 2020 theme was African Americans and the Vote is in honor of the centennial anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment, which is in 1920, granting women's suffrage and is set for centennial of 1870, giving black men the right to vote. And even though black health and wellness is the theme for 2022, the 2020 theme, African Americans and the Vote, would have been an excellent theme for this year's Black History Month with the challenges we are now facing in today's voting irregularities throughout these United States. In closing, it is my hope that the foregoing bits of information shed a little light on some important facts, some of which you may or may not be aware. You see, you really don't know what you don't know. Thanks for your indulgence.
Well, thank you so much, Hank. That was a great presentation and I think we all did learn something today. And so any day you can learn is is a good day. And we really appreciate you educating us and educating our listeners. And we look forward to bringing you back next year for for Black History Month and maybe let this council educate this council a little bit more in next year.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, now on to our our joint work session with our historical commission. I guess I'll turn this over to to Jen and we'll get right into it.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. We are just getting our commissioners in here through the portal. I see Commissioner Thirty Acre and Evil. I see Kyo and Black. And so while we're just waiting just a couple more minutes to see if anybody else comes through the portal, I just wanted to thank the council and the historical commission for coming together this evening to celebrate the commission's 2021 accomplishments, approve their 2022 work plan and get an update regarding the current Lacey Museum and the new Lacey Museum and Cultural Center project. So let's do introductions. Commissioner Evil, do you want to start off?
Sure. And let me first apologize for doing this from my car in the parking lot of Salish Middle School. I am going to be joining my son's Scouts BSA Court of Honor immediately following this presentation. So he'll be promoted soon to Life Scout, I believe. So anyway, I'm Eric Evil. I'm the Chair of the Lacey Historical Commission. Nice to see you all again.
Commissioner Thirty Acre? Oh, you're on mute. Oh, we still can't hear you. Let's go while you're fixing that. Let's see. Commissioner Black?
Glad to be here.
You and Kyo?
Good to see you this evening.
It looks like we have Commissioner Tyler, who's just joined. Do I introduce Alan? Commissioner Thirty Acre, were you able to fix your sound?
I believe so. Can you hear me? Hello, Sarah Thirty Acre. Thank you for having us.
That's great. And it looks like we are missing. Oh, there's Commissioner Tyler.
Good evening, everybody.
And we're just missing Commissioner Getz. And so if she joins, we'll make sure and stop and introduce her. And on the note of Commissioner Evil saying he's he's gonna go to his son's function, Mayor, I just wanted to let you know I'll start off and then turn it over to Commissioner Evil and then we're going to, I'll stop, share and pause, looking for that approval of the work plan so that we can, he can peel off at any moment after that, but I'll share screen again after that. Know what's going on. And unfortunately, Aaron Quindalcho, our museum curator, was unable to be here with us tonight. So I'll be covering the museum annual report for her. So before, so let me share my screen here. Give me one moment. Or two. Oh, it's making me reopen the document. Hold on one moment here.
Blood technology.
I know. I had it up on the screen, but it's wanting me to close out and come back in, so. All right. Goodness gracious, there it is.
There you go.
I'll give you a full full screen. All right. You can see that sounds like. All right. So before we jump into the commission's work, I just wanted to highlight a few museum marketing items. We've been cross promoting the museum and programs to park and recreation customers. And so museum happenings have been included in our playbook. So this is the photo of the museum page that exists in the playbook. And on that same theme, we've been including museum programs and happenings in our digital publication monthly as well. Then the new museum website is coming along nicely and going live soon. So this is a clip of the main page. And at your upcoming Council Community Relations Committee meeting on March 7th, we'll be showing a live view of some of the pages and we'll be sure to update the historical commissioners as well. So before I hand this over to our commission chair Evil, I really want to thank him and also the rest of the commission for their work in 2021. And as I told Commissioner Evil at the last historical commission meeting, even though I don't really want to talk about this, we can't ignore the fact that this will be Eric's last work session as his second term expires this coming September. So Eric's been on the board eight years with seven of those years as chair. So the next time you see him at a council meeting, unfortunately, we will be saying goodbye to him unless he, you know, comes as a as a Lacey resident, of course. But with that, I'll hand it over to you, Commissioner Evil.
Well, thank you very much, Jen. I appreciate it. And I want to thank all of my fellow commissioners for the service and dedication that they've shown throughout their time on the Lacey Historical Commission. Thank you, Mayor Ryder and members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce the Lacey Historical Commission's 2021 accomplishments. Now they're included in the packet and we will be touching on many of them in the museum annual report, but I'd like to take a few minutes just to highlight a few of them. We did a virtual dedication for the new Lacey Depot in March. The Lacey Rotary Interpretive Panel was finished and installed near the train-themed playground. The Lacey Food Truck Plaza was launched at the Lacey Depot site and the Lacey Depot was made available to the public on a shortened schedule because of COVID with weekend rental opportunities from July through September of 2021. Even in that shortened truncated time, it brought in $1,100 in rental revenue. The new museum and cultural center took up many of our discussions throughout 2021. And I'm sure you, like we, will fall in love with this rendering. Jen's gonna give a more extensive update on the project a little bit later in the presentation, but we wanted to point out that although the new museum is not yet constructed, there's been plenty of work going on behind the scenes to advance the project. Moving on to the commission's 2022 work plan. The work plan is also included in your packet, by the way, but again, I want to highlight a few significant items. We look forward to re-engaging in Thurston Throwback, a public history collaboration with all of Thurston County's heritage organizations at the Thurston County Fair, assuming that it'll be running this year. We also look forward to an in-person Lacey Depot grand opening, which hasn't been able to be held due to COVID. The commission is working on a joint project at the Regional Athletic Complex with the Thurston County Historic Commission. And the goal of that project is to place a kiosk with historical information in a high-traffic location for the community to enjoy and learn about the area while they're at the rack. We expect that kiosk to have six display panels and some of the options to display at this point include the Evergreen Ballroom, Niskewa Lee Tribal History and the Medicine Creek Treaty, the Niskewa Wildlife Refuge. Again, these are just ideas right now. The Mushroom Farm property, Fort Lewis, the history of the rack in Bucknell Fields, the Lacey Commission and the Historical Commission could be included, and the Lacey Racetrack, and certainly the Lacey Museum would be up for contention as well. Now, I'd like to thank Commissioner Kehoe for his efforts with this project, along with former Commissioner Huff, who spent a lot of time blazing that ground for us. Next year, the commission will start work on providing updates and edits to the 2023 Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. Historic properties. The commission's going to continue to identify properties on the historic property inventory in 2022. And at this time, we'd like to request the council accept our Lacey Historical Commission 2021 accomplishments and 2022 work plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion? I'll move to approve our Lacey Store Commission's 2020 work plan and accomplishments. Second. Move in second. Discussion. Any discussion?
The rendering looks great. And if it comes out looking anything like that, I think the entire community is gonna enjoy it and probably spend a lot of time there. I noticed in in one of the slide pictures, it was a dude who looked like Lenny Wilkins that I think next to Karen Fraser. Is that?
That was. That was.
It was.
That was. That was when we opened up the original, the city hall at its current location. Karen Fraser was the mayor and Lenny Wilkins came down and was part of the grand opening ceremony. Pretty cool, huh? And and I know that we're still under discussion and we're gonna talk a little bit more about the new museum project right then. So she'll be able to even answer some more questions and give you some more insight. And I can I can sort of fill in there as well on what's what we've been doing to help support that project. But is there any other discussion? Counselor Cox?
I'd just like to thank the members of the Historic Commission for doing this quiet, effective work that is going to have such a huge impact on our community. So commend you with gratitude.
And it does look like we'll see Eric more time when he comes for Lacey History Month. And I'm sure he'll be presenting that proclamation. So we'll we'll see. We'll see again. We haven't got rid of got rid of you yet.
That's a really good point. That'll be in May.
That'll be in May.
Indeed.
Is there any other discussion?
I'll just piggyback that and thank the commission for all their hard work and dedication. You know, the majority of our council, we're planning commissioners and we know the work that goes into being on committees, especially ones that improve the the overall quality of life for our residents. You know, my kids, as well as everybody else's and the mayors and, you know, grew up with these parks and you know, it had a really positive impact on them becoming adults. So thank you. You know, you guys don't have to be so generous of your time and give them back to the city. And you do, and that's, you know, nothing but thanks for that.
Well, and we're we're really getting into exciting time as a Lacey Start Commission because of the new museum and cultural center. And we're making a ton of progress on that. And I generally talk about a little bit more and tell you where we're at on that. But it's it's really exciting where we're at. We're starting to see a lot of movement and this this idea of bringing a new museum and cultural center to Lacey is an idea, and I think the Store Commission and this city knows, is something that I've been working on back when I was a Lacey Store Commissioner. Matter of fact, my very first day as a Lacey Store Commissioner, I was presenting the idea of building a new museum and cultural center. And so it's been that long that we've been talking about and to finally get to this point where we're gonna actually see see some significant progress after all these years, it's really, really exciting. So it's exciting time to be a store commissioner and I see part of your work program. This is what the role the role we have the Store Commission in pushing this over, you know, the finish line. And so I look forward to hearing that and working with all the all the store commissioners this next year. That being said, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion we ask to carries. And then I'll I'll turn it back over to Jen to sort of go into a deeper dive on where we're at on the the new museum and cultural center project.
Now, if I could, Mr. Mayor, one more thing before I pass the mic over to Jen. I want to note for the record, the hard work and dedication that Jen and Aaron have given to these projects. And Aaron specifically, her steadfast stewardship of Lacey's history has been commendable. And I really look forward to seeing her installed as Director of the New Museum when it opens. And with that, I'll go ahead and share that over to Jen.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you so much, Eric. Have a good night. And I will go ahead and share my screen again. It'll be a little easier this time. Y'all see this?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. So I will, let's see, quickly, I'll give Aaron's report. She does such a great job with the 2021, with the annual report for the museum. And so we had, and then I'll get into the museum, the new museum project. So we had another busy year at the museum. We feel this was a transition year for the museum as we moved out of shutdowns and closures, reopened, we hired and rehired staff. We unfortunately had went through another museum assistant, so had to hire another one, which they were, they've both been fabulous. It's just a lot of training. We welcomed volunteers back and the new museum project went from a planning phase into more prepping for construction. In regards to exhibits, with another year of COVID to deal with, the museum was closed for half the year, opening on July 1st, finally. But here are the numbers, 220 walk-in visitors in those six months. And this chart here shows where our visitors came from. The museum opened with a traveling exhibit from the Secretary of State's office called Who Are We, Washington? About people from our state who have made a difference in the community. And this exhibit was up through September and was on display both at the museum and at City Hall. And then in November, we opened with two poster exhibits, Righting a Wrong, Japanese-Americans and World War II, and From Parlor to Podium, about the path of women's suffrage in Washington State. To give you a sense of how this year or this past year has compared to other years, Aaron created this chart that compares attendance from 2016 through 2021. She pulled out the Sasquatch year, which was 2019, you'll notice, because the numbers were so high that it makes the nuances of normal years hard to see in a chart. For those of you who may not know, we brought in a traveling exhibit on Sasquatch in 2019 For those of you who may not know, we brought in a traveling exhibit on Sasquatch in twenty nineteen that brought in over four thousand people, which is nine times our usual attendance. So the green bar represents walk-in attendance at the museum. And the blue bar indicates attendance at our events, both in person and virtual. So twenty twenty one walk-in numbers are pretty low, actually compared to pre-COVID numbers. But our event number is really doing a great job at holding steady. And then since we were closed half the year, Erin just compared the last six months of the same years to see how we did. This slide shows the same bar graph, but with a line overlaid. The line represents walk-ins for the last six months of all the years. And as you can see, when we compare apples to apples, we really did have an outstanding year. So why is attendance doing so well? We think there are a number of factors. One is that we're trying really hard to have new things to see at the museum, giving people a reason to come by. Another is that although we're still in the pandemic, the museum, museum is a fairly safe activity, and people definitely still want to do things. Lastly, we think the recognition we received from Sasquatch gave us a place in people's minds. So when they think of something to do or they have guests coming from out of town, they think of us now. So that is awesome. Regarding history talks, it's our third year of the speaker series. We had five hundred and eighty-eight participants, more than twice the year prior, at two hundred and seventy-six. We had planned to go hybrid in the fall, but a rise in the cases of COVID obviously kept the program virtual all year. A survey we conducted last spring told us that there is a high desire to continue offering these live online, even when we are able to resume, resume in-person talks. This program on the slide was our most popular, the People's History of the Seven Inlets of the Southern Salish Sea. We had a hundred and forty-three people attend. And this year, we started tracking YouTube views of our presentations and uploading videos. We started actually uploading videos in twenty nineteen. And since that time, we've had six thousand three hundred and forty-two views. If Sasquatch were included, that number jumps to over seven hundred thousand. Regarding customer service, we had a total of thirty-five customer service requests filled in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, which is the same as twenty twenty, but less than half what we would see before the pandemic. These requests include copy and scanning orders, research requests, and public records requests. So staff spent ninety-nine hours or twelve point four days working on filling these requests. And this is a much lower number than in past years. Erin does a great job with the metrics, as you can tell. That's our service. Whoops, I missed one. Some fun highlights of the projects we helped with this year are shown here. The image on the left shows firemen looking at the dispatch control center in the sixties. Erin is helping a gentleman who's writing a history of the Lacy Fire Department. So he provided this picture. In the center are four women students learning to fly at the Olympia Airport in the nineteen forties. We have a great airport collection, and we're helping Shanna Stevenson with her research project on that. And at the right is an aerial over what is now the Fred Meyer Shopping Center, but was then a drive-in theater. We had a property owner and developer contact us to find out the history of the site and, which is visible in this photo. So another interesting tidbit is that only fourteen percent of our external customer requests were from Lacy. Sixty-eight percent were from other parts of Thurston County. So you can see the museum's audience and customer base continues to be well beyond Lacy's borders. Regarding collections and new acquisitions, we continued to work on collections, adding a hundred and eleven items to the database and scanning six hundred and twenty-three images. Over two thousand images were processed and added to the database this year, or excuse me, in twenty twenty-one. The museum took in twenty-two acquisitions, representing approximately three hundred and fifty items. Some of Erin's favorites are on this slide, including a desk from the Lacy School, a chair with a great local story, and this photograph of the Lacy Rotary, excuse me, Rotary, excuse me, Lacy Rodeo. Regarding grants and other funding, actually, a lot of this is going to be discussed at a later slide for the new museum project, but I'll just highlight a couple of things here. We did receive, again, a lodging tax. And we did receive a diversity and local history grant. There is a current intern who is working on the Jackson interpretive marker and is going to begin a collections audit on Black History in the Lacy area from nineteen fifty to nineteen seventy-five for a research project that Thelma Jackson is working on. So we're excited about that. Lastly, Erin wanted to make sure and share what we have in the works for twenty twenty-two at the museum. We're planning to start work on a charter membership program. In addition, we're planning on switching out exhibits in June with nineteen sixty-eight, the year that rocked Washington, a traveling exhibit from the Secretary of State's office, featuring our own Karen Fraser. And for this summer, we're planning a virtual cemetery tour of the Ruttle Pioneer Cemetery. And then in the fall, we'll be bringing in another Smithsonian poster exhibit called Journey Stories, about how migration has had an impact on life in America with special emphasis on the Oregon Trail. So lots going on at the museum. I'll move right into the new museum and cultural center project update. This is kind of a cool drone shot that I would share. This one, I've shared quite a bit. We've talked about the museum being a long-term goal of the city. The mayor just mentioned that a few minutes ago. And an east anchor of the Depot District, which has great proximity to St. Martin's University, will in the future be a more accessible and walkable location and place for the community to gather both inside and outside. What I wanted to highlight are the new additions in twenty twenty-one on our little timeline here. I had mentioned, of course, before, the two Heritage Capital Projects Grants. But in addition, the exhibit schematic design made it two hundred percent complete. This is a great photo to show you. So on the note of, of working towards the new museum, we had a few things happen in twenty twenty-one to prepare for Phase Three. First of all, the voluntary cleanup. So this shows the plywood factory that used to be at the site. The city this past year worked with the State of Washington Department of Ecology for a volunteer cleanup program at the future site due to past industrial use. The work was done on the east side of the building, just outside the overhead garage door, and started July twelfth. Lasted about a month during the summer. The work consisted of sampling and excavating petroleum contaminated soils, backfilling once determined to be clean soils, and then the contaminated soils being disposed of appropriately off-site. After the cleanup, the city installed a monitoring well for periodic review. We also did a cultural resources survey as a part of our Heritage Capital Projects grant requirement. It was also a specific request from the Squawson Island Tribe. In twenty twenty, in preparation for this, we met with one of the tribe's representatives and also one of our historical commissioners, Sarah Thirtyacre, who's an expert in this field, actually came out to the site to ensure the scope was written accurately for the work as we went out for the consultant for this work. And so in late twenty twenty-one, a firm called Cardno completed the work. What they did was essentially probe the area for artifacts. And so you can see one of the probes here pictured. So multiple artifacts were found. You can see some of them on the left there. And they were recorded, but they indicated historic period resources. But it was determined there were no cultural resource impacts. And that determination was confirmed by the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. So no permit, special permit was needed, and an onsite archaeologist will not be required. The Historical Commission appointed an archaeology committee to ensure everything was done correctly along the way. So I want to thank them, Commissioners Black, Evil, and Thirtyacre for, for that extra, extra lift there. Also, in twenty twenty-one, we were approved for a Salmon Safe certification. So as noted earlier, we had received a seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant from the Nisqually Tribe to pay for this certification, and it also helped us gain the lead silver status for the project. You might ask, what is Salmon Safe? So it's a nonprofit organization. They started in nineteen ninety-seven with a mission to transform land management practices so Pacific salmon can thrive in West Coast watersheds. They established a partner network in two thousand and seven also to extend their range. And so they have a volunteer science team. And they, in their report, they commended the city of Lacy and our project team for our commitment to implement the conditions listed in our report and to manage the site to continue to improve water quality and salmon habitat over the next five years. That's what our certification is for, for five years. But good news, the city's requirements were very close to that of Salmon Safe. So it was a pretty seamless process. So they'll be providing us with a plaque that will eventually live at the museum. But for the storyboard that is soon gonna go out at the new museum site in conjunction with the, some of the improvements for the food truck plaza, we'll be taking a picture of the plaque just so it doesn't get vandalized and making sure that, 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 you know, certification is shown there. And of note, we're the first museum to become Salmon Safe certified. So we're really excited to include that in our marketing and also educational tours. So I can't thank city staff enough, Erin Quinn Valcho and Ashley Smith, along with the members of the commission for navigating us through these two things in twenty twenty-one. It looks kind of simple here up on the screen, but, you know, there's always, there's always a process. So grateful that we, we got through that. You've seen this before, even recently. So just a reminder, this is a phase project. We're on phase three right now. The contract actually for the site clearing and building demolition work was signed. And the notice to proceed actually is dated this coming Monday, February the twenty-eighth. So we anticipate work finishing no later than June of this year. So I thought we should show the rendering, since we have a new council member. And it's also been about a year since the council has seen these slides. So here's a rendering of the front of the building. A focus for this facility is the cultural heritage of our region. And so consulting with our tribal partners, the Nisqually and Squawson Island Tribes, has been and will continue to be an important component of this project. We worked with them on these nine lodge poles in the welcoming plaza to represent the signatory tribes of the Medicine Creek Treaty and to acknowledge that the land the museum is on was once traditional lands of local tribes. Other focuses for the facility and its programs are equity, inclusion, and accurate education. Museums continue to be viewed as institutions that provide trustworthy information. So let's look at some of the things that will take place here. We're zooming in a little bit to go through that front door. There's plywood on the, inside the vestibule here, which is a nod to the Plywood Company that was historically on the site. And then engraved into the wall, I can't recall which side, one or the other, will be that land acknowledgement after consultation with the tribes. So after you come through the main door, here's a rendering of what you'll see. To the left is the events wing. And to the right is a change exhibit hall here, and then the main exhibit, exhibit area here. And these panels are pretty cool. You'll see a better view in the next slide. But they're also, they're meant to hang artwork or exhibit and/or exhibit materials and kind of pull people into that exhibit area from the hallway. So if you took a right as you were going down the hallway, these are those panels that I was just describing to you. This is the main exhibit. Of course, it won't be empty like you see here, but it just gives you a feel for the look and the feel. We mentioned earlier, the exhibit design made it through hundred percent schematic. So this is just a, one of the exhibit concept sketches. So if you would have taken a left after you come through the main entry, you would be in the community wing. So this is an event room with a divisible classroom. And these divisible spaces cannot only be used for events such as wedding or fundraising rentals, but we see the space used for theater, art, dance, music, language, cuisine classes, really any kind of heritage, cultural art, dance, or presentation, or food event or class. And so in addition, wellness programs such as yoga, Pilates, meditation, et cetera. We also see this facility being used by summer camps, after-school, and educational programs. Also, community farming classes as an interest area. This location is not far down the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail from the upcoming project, the Woodland Creek Food Forest. So let's move to the exterior. Here's a north-facing view of the building. This is where the museum back of house is located. And then here's another north-facing view. It has, the community wing has these garage-style doors that will open up to an event lawn. And we do see, you know, a large seasonal event tent out there as well so that events can spill out onto the lawn. So the Lacy Foundation is a newly formed nonprofit whose fiscal sponsor is the Park Foundation of Thurston County. And Park stands for Parks, Arts, Recreation, and Culture. They're currently forming their board and become, plan to become an established 501(c)(3). I did invite them tonight, but they weren't quite ready, but they wanted to attend an upcoming work session. So we'll make sure that that happens. But they did provide me with some of this information here on the screen that I wanted to share. And I wanted to make sure and clarify too that the mission is, you know, they're still forming their board, and so the mission is still in development. But it says that the Lacy Community Foundation supports projects, programs, and events that benefit residents of the city of Lacy. The foundation's purpose is to improve the quality of life for Lacians. So I highlighted this, they're coining the term Lacians and also, also legacy Lacians. So it's kind of, kind of exciting. And visitors to the city by building community financial supports for projects and programs that provide enrichment and meet the community values of equity, inclusion, and sustainability, and which encourage a vibrant business climate. And then this is kind of cool, all the reasons we love Lacy. And this is, some of the things are going to be talking to people in the community about, you know, home to some pretty cool facilities, distinct neighborhoods, strong network of community partners, many youth-centric activities, an abundance of outdoor recreation opportunities, natural beauty. Lacy honors its history, sense of historic preservation in public and private schools, their strong community support for law enforcement, active military, and veterans. And Lacy has a robust small business community and outstanding dining options. And so what I wanted to do now is talk about funding. The purpose of this slide is to show an overview of the funding categories, indicate where we currently are and where we want to get, and then clarify the roles of city staff, city council, historical commission, the newly formed Lacy Foundation, and other foundations such as Park and the Historical Society. And then I have another slide that shows some of the opportunities being pursued, but I just want to do this overview first. So this one shows the total project cost here on the left. Seventeen point seven million represents everything on the site from the purchase of the land to full construction of the building. So everything in between, like the road extension, the depot, the train playground, et cetera. The blue bars represent projected amounts, and the orange bars represent amounts received. So you can see on the far left, we have received four point seven million or twenty-six percent of the total project cost. And then across the bottom, you can see the funding categories. This thirteen million is the total funding goal that's left. If you do the seventeen point seven minus the four point seven, and that's essentially the cost of the museum building and site as well. So if you go across here, city funding, we see a seventeen percent of the total cost, a hundred percent has been received. As you know, we've been able to leverage that with, as match. This is obviously a city category. The next category is the largest state and federal funding at sixty percent. One point six has been received, or fifteen percent of that category in the form of our two Heritage Capital Projects Grants. And then, so this is, this is a city category. City staff will be pursuing this, but this one is obviously the heaviest lift. And this one's gonna require a village. So we need council members, commissioners, the Circle Society, and, you know, Lacy Foundation, Park Foundation members to advocate and influence. Again, I'll provide some of the opportunities on a slide that's coming up. But this is really the one where we all need to come together and I'll talk about making sure we're, we have the same messaging, all of us. The next category is private and corporate foundations, and it's ten percent of the project. This is a Lacy Foundation category. There are opportunities that the city is not eligible to apply for, but that the foundation is. And we do have point three percent in, that's five thousand dollars from the BNSF Foundation, Railway Foundation, which could be a potential future source as well. This one here, sponsorships and community partners, this is a city staff category. We revamped our sponsorship program at the end of twenty nineteen. And we're currently setting up a formalized community partners program specifically for this project that I'll explain in a later slide. Oh, did you have a question, council member, Vasquez?
Just curious, I'm sure that plan is in the works to reach out to recreation and conservation. To our grant, would that, would their grants be able to fund this project? And what size are those grants usually?
Yeah, so RCO is focused on outdoor. So this one isn't, I don't think off the top of my head, this will be. So this one isn't, I don't think off the top of my head, this one will be eligible. Now I can, I'm actually reading through in great detail those grant opportunities for the Great Kyo Park Project. And so if there's something that applies here, definitely. Typically, there's our, you know, outdoor recreation and trails. But we'll take any and all ideas, so please continue bringing those up. So this, this one here, so 5% there, oh, see where was I? Private. Sponsorships, right. So community partners, we are, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. We see 5% of the total project cost. We do have the 8% in thanks to. Lacey Rotary and Fire District 3 for their generous contributions to the site. And then individual donations, this category can may, be made to the city or to the Lacey Foundation. It's better to the Lacey Foundation. So really we consider this a Lacey Foundation category at 5% of the total. We have received some donations and I need to populate these numbers the next time around. Other grants. Is a city category such as that 7,500 we got from the Squali tribe that's already come in. And I did want to point out too, this is definitely a working document. You might notice that some of the percentages are a little different than the last time. So as we dive into this project a little bit more and consult with experts and. Look at other similar projects, we will be tweaking these numbers a little bit and I will make sure to. Keep everybody informed as to the latest. I touched on the consistent messaging.
Jen, I had one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No worries. So I'm assuming the Lacey Community Foundation is either already has or is planning to file as a nonprofit with the Secretary of State's office.
Or he has.
If they're, if they're registered through the combined fund drive, then state employees can donate. Like do direct payroll deductions as a form of donation. We have a couple thousand state employees that live in Lacey. They might want to contribute that way.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And when we get done here, I will fill the council more in on the Lacey Foundation.
Okay, great idea. Okay, so with the consistent messaging, so this is where I was saying, you know, we just, we all need to be on the same page with our, our. Main point, so this is a community place for culture, heritage, diversity, equity and inclusion. We do want to make sure and capitalize on any climate initiatives with the lead silver. You know, status for the infrastructure and also the Salmon Safe certification. We do see this as a long-term economic driver. It does provide outdoor play and education and. Commission, council member Vasquez is probably why you were thinking of RCO because yes, it is, it is a park site as well. So we want to look at the opportunities there and we also want to highlight local partnerships for education with the school district and St. Martin's, for example. So there's a lot going on here. But this just shows, i- if you look at like what Lacey Parks is going to be focusing on strategically. And then the Lacey Foundation is listed over here on the right side. You can kind of see year for year what the status is. So a couple of things to highlight on this slide. We really hope to be able to apply for the Defense Community Infrastructure Program. We're going to be watching it and hoping that. Projects in 2022 are funded off base as well as on military base. So we'll be keeping our eye on that and then here you'll see in 2023 would apply if, if it looks like we're eligible. There is an NEH grant that we're planning to apply for, for the rest of the exhibit design and that'll happen this year. We also, you'll see here, we've got a federal ask listed for in the community projects category. And that is strategic because if we could get monies in, we could match for the next Heritage Capital Projects Grant Cycle. But, and that's why we put the state legislative ask later because we can't match this one with state funds. So that was the strategy there. We're going to be looking at. There's one through DAP that we'll be looking at next year and preparing for. We're going to look and see if we're eligible for CDVG. And then you'll see some others listed here and they're, they're strategically placed. Because like, for example, this commerce one here, we have to have a certain amount of money fundraised. Before or in, you know, for the project before applying. So these, again, working document, you know, but this just kind of shows you what we've been working on. And then also over here, the foundation, and it sounds like the mayor is going to talk about that a little bit more. They're, you know, establishing the board, looking to get the first commitments through the door. It is going to take a couple of years to obtain their tax exempt status and, and council member Vasquez, to your question. They are 501(c)(3), they're not tax exempt yet, so that's why they have the Park. Foundation of Thurston County as their fiscal sponsor at this time. And then, so these are some of the foundations that the city can't apply for, but that a foundation can. And then these, this is, these are examples here of other kind of smaller grants in that other category that you saw. Of course, we, you know, always want to thank our champions and volunteers. And then we have a different category that we are working on right now. And the reason I have potential examples. Here is because these aren't confirmed, but these are clubs who have expressed interest. What we'd like to do is long-term partnership with local service clubs and organizations in perpetuity. Because the fact is, you know, we're going to need support ongoing. For the Museum and Cultural Center as an important cultural and educational fixture in the community. And so in the beginning, we're going to need funding and eventually there'll be meaningful projects. But I'll give you a good example. So the Lacey Center and Lions, they do want to fund the flagpole. Say it's $3,000, that would be like a three year, if they were at the $1,000 a year commitment. That would be a three-year commitment for that club. So that's just an example of how that could work. But we really want to avoid fundraising fatigue with these, you know, these core community groups. Again, it's a, it's a long-term partnership instead of just let's build this thing. It's like, how can we work together into the future? Next steps, completion of phase three, as you know, we've talked about that a lot. Continuing community outreach, strategic planning, securing funding, coming up with the metrics that we'll need to for some of these grant opportunities. And I know that was long, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Can you stop sharing your screen? Are there any questions before I get into my spiel?
It's a sort of unrelated question, but related. What is in the works this summer for using the depot? Replica and how can we use that to attract interest in the bigger project?
Yeah, great question. So we, we will be opening it earlier. For use this year because the COVID cases have gone down, so we'll actually be able to open it on time. It'll be open May through September for free drop-in use, so trail users can come off the trail. Or if you go to the food truck plaza, you know, you can sit inside and eat. We also have rental opportunities on the weekends. The reason it's only on the weekends is because of the food truck plaza. We want to make sure that there's enough. We don't want to have conflicting uses. There are some upgrades that are going to be happening to the food truck plaza. Although the food trucks aren't going to be able to start until after the demolition project is done. And so, but we are planning, as you know, money was approved in the budget through community and economic, economic development. We are putting in a stage. And some, some more outdoor seating with cover. And then we're doing a kiosk with the storyboard about the project and the various mentioned, the Salmon Safe Certification and all about the project, so that'll be going in. I just don't know the exact date for that, but definitely, definitely this summer.
Just seems like a natural opportunity.
Yes, absolutely.
Just curious, Jen, what is the likelihood of getting that much federal and state money? I mean, is that, is that a real? Is that number attainable, that 10-point, whatever it was?
It, it is attainable. I mean, that's, you know, when you look at other projects that are similar. It's just a matter of getting them.
So this, this is, this is where I'll step in and, and Jen had to be careful here because there has to be a clear line between the city of Lacey. And the Lacey Community Foundation. And so that's why she can't really answer all, all, all these questions, but. We've been talking about this project for a long time and we've realized we've reached a stage in our development. That, like, how do you move forward on a major capital project like this in a community? And, and how projects like this get built in communities is a combination between public and private funding. And so what, what we've looked at is, is there's public funding out there. And believe it or not, about 70% of this can come from public, different sorts of public funding through grants and other, other things. But a lot of those things need a match from the private sector. So 30% of that. That amounts, you know, about 3 million or so needs to come through the private sector, but it's not just from. People contributing dollars. And so what, how, how this really works is. You know, you look at different, different projects that are out there in different communities and that's why foundations are formed. Because you need that 501(c)(3) status to be able to apply for grants. That cities are not eligible for. And so like, for example, Jen listed several of the major. Funders out there and they will not give to cities, but they will give to a, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The problem is, is Lacey has, doesn't have a foundation, right? This is something that we've been talking about in this community for a long time and it's sort of. Where, where we're at in the history of our city, right? We've, we've come to a point in our time where there are major capital projects that we, this council wants to see completed. That our, our community wants to see completed, but it's impossible to do on just public dollars alone. And so what, it's almost kind of like a, an à la carte sort of. Government where, you know, where you need public-private dollars. And so. We looked at, it's like, what are other communities doing? And in a lot of cases, foundations are started because there's several, you know, people within the community who. Who care about the community and want to see a major project happen, so they pull their dollars together. They, they form a nonprofit, which starts a foundation that then can apply for other funds that keeps that foundation going. And for example, we saw that down in Centralia, when they built the indoor facility. Several families got together, they had some dollars, right, were able to. Use those dollars to attract other dollars and they were able to do a major project. And so we realized we needed a community foundation, but it just doesn't happen overnight. There's. One thing is to apply to be a nonprofit status for the states, which it's another thing to be get. Become a 501(c)(3) status with IRS. And that usually takes on average around three years. It can go a little bit faster depending. On where you're at, what dollars you have, where your board directors are at, so on, so forth. And so it's been almost a couple of years ago, and maybe not quite that long ago, where we are having a conversation like, how do we get? This Lacey Museum and Cultural Center built and we've realized we have to have a foundation. It's not started, we have to start from scratch. And I basically tapped the, the first lady, my, you know, my, my wife, Becky Ryder and said, you know, can you please? Try to figure this out, you know, for our community. And I just basically threw it in her lap and she, so she's been working on, she's the president of the Lacey Community Foundation. Early on, she's, you know, been, been working with a. A, a small board to try to get this started. And we've, we've hired Jim Camber, who's a, someone who does major projects, fundraising for major projects. We, the, the community foundation has, has hired him to get us through this first initial fundraising goal. And we put a fundraising goal out there of say, you know, 100, 125, we didn't know. We knew it needed to be over $100,000, just to get us to a point where we can take those dollars and hire someone. To continue on with the process of completing the foundation, then that person will then do additional fundraising. Will find grants, will be marrying up those grants with city grants and everything to get to us to a point where we can get our first project built. And so. We've been scheduling meetings with, with, we first started off with, you know, people in our community. That we know, you know, have our vested interest in our community, longtime Lacey businesses. People that we all can think about as, as who cares about the quality of life in the city of Lacey. And we started setting up meetings and it's been myself. The first lady and Jim going to these meetings. Pitching this idea of this, we need to get this initial dollars in through the door to start the Lacey Foundation. The problem is, is we don't have the 501(c)(3) status and so luckily we have, as Jen talked about. We have a relationship with the, the Park Foundation, who is, has the 501(c)(3), 501(c)(3) status. And they're being the fiscal agent for the foundation early on. And so they're handling all the finances on, on that side. And so when someone's making this early on contribution, they're making it to Lacey Park Found, Lacey. Or the Park Foundation care of the Lacey Community Foundation. So they set up a, a fund within the Park Foundation. That's specifically for the Lacey Community Foundation. And so they're handling all the paperwork for us, which is a huge benefit. Like we couldn't have done, we couldn't do this without their support. So a big shout goes out to the Park Foundation. They're handling all the paperwork for us early on. And so we've only gone through about a week and a half worth of meetings. And we've already raised about $60,000 in the past week and a half. And so we've had some major contributions already and, and everyone we've spoken to has been very excited about having. A, a Lacey Community Foundation because this is a foundation that, yes, we looked at originally to start. The, to get the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center built. But we have other major projects in our community that we all care about, that will need the nonprofit side to get to completion. For example, the Great Kyo Park in Greenway, you know, we just saw the master plan. We saw eight different phases of that master plan. It's going to take a public-private partnership to build that out. And so we'll, we'll be dependent on the Lacey Community Foundation as the 501(c)(3). That goes after grants to get that built out as well. There's other projects that this council can think of. That, that we would all love to see happen, but we'll need a public-private partnership to get there. So. We're at the beginning stages of forming this foundation. We've already gotten a commitment, say, from Willie Frank to, to be on the board of directors of, of the foundation. We got another commitment from Skilling's to be on our, our board. And so we're going through this process of, of getting this foundation formed. It'd be great if, you know, we had a bunch of, you know, a couple of people who want to throw large dollars. At the foundation to get it started, but we're really having to build this from the ground up. And so after we get this initial, at this point, I think we're shooting more closer to 200,000 through this next two or three months. We will then take that 200,000 to, to hire someone. That will essentially take us the rest of the way, that will complete, that will be working with the board of directors of Lacey Community Foundation. That will be looking for all those grants, opportunities. And be working with the city on how we match up private funds with public funds. So we can not only build the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center, but the other major projects like the Great Kyo Park and so on and so forth in our community. So. It's a really exciting time, you know, we, and everyone here has, I'm sure, at one time given to a charity. But this is the first time that you're going to give it to a charity that is completely focused on building the quality of life. Within the city of Lacey. We, we never had any ability to do that before. We will with this foundation. So it's, it's exciting time to, you know, be a part of it. I'm, I'm more than happy to be out there promoting it. And I'm very thankful that, that the first lady took this on as a, and is getting off the grounds and is, is forming the board. That will have a huge impact on our community for, you know, the rest of our city's history.
If I, if I may quickly, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that I'm not attending the.
If I may quickly, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that I'm not attending the fundraising meetings, I'm providing documents, you know, of the slides and the renderings of the museum or any other park projects.
Yeah, so when ever someone asked about this project, or asked about the Great Kyo Park project, I'd been able to get information from the city. But there's a clear line between the city and the foundation, that's the work that's going on, so.
And then one more, one more real quick thing I wanted to mention to Councilmember Greenstein, since you asked about the funding categories. So Mayor mentioned Jim Camber, who the Lacey Foundation is working with. So he is a consultant and expert in this type, and is a local expert. And so he did confirm that the percentages for the funding categories are appropriate. But like I said, they'll, you know, they may, they may change as we go along, so.
Sure. And so, yeah. Offline, I will, I'll be more happy to talk to council members, to talk to store commission members on how you can help support not only this project, but other projects. And so, like I said, it's an exciting time. We're starting from the ground floor, so it's not the easiest way to get started. But I'm very enthusiastic about the reception we've received so far. And just be able to check in with some of these longtime Lacey businesses about what's happening in their community is a benefit as well. It's amazing, you know, we talk about this stuff all the time. And so we're, you know, I think everyone knows. But so far, with several businesses I've talked to, they had no idea what the Great Kyo Park in Greenway was, or the least, what any of this was. And so it's, I think it's a reminder of how sometimes siloed information is. And it's good to be able to get out and talk to your longstanding community leadership on this project and other things that we're trying to do in the city of Lacey.
Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
So me being me, and as embarrassing as it is, when I was thinking of the commission earlier, you know, I saw Jen and my brain went to Parks. And just as important as Parks and is the Historical Committee, I want to sincerely apologize. You guys are great in the work you do. I mean, my family is society members, and we've been at the museum dozens of times. We've been on the historic walks, we've had ice cream. And we celebrate our history, and we're proud of it as a family. Because, you know, you have to be proud of where you come from if it's going to be a home. And so I have to make that right.
No problem.
Embarrassing as it is, the Historical Commission means a great deal to my family. So please accept my apology, and so I had to correct that, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for that. We knew what you meant, Mike. Is there any other, is there any other questions you have about where we're at in this process, about Lacey Community Foundation? There will be a time where the rest of the board from the Lacey Community Foundation will give a presentation about where we're at in this process. They'll answer more questions. Right now, I'm just their head cheerleader. I'm not on the board of the Lacey Community Foundation. You know, my wife is, but I'm just here in support of not only this project, but other great projects that we have in our community. And so I'm happy to support, and hopefully, I know everyone on our council is happy to support that as well. Is there any other questions on the joint work session for the Historical Commission? Do you have anything else, Jen?
Nope, just thank you so much, council, and also historical commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And so now we'll go on to our next agenda item. And believe it or not, we're right on time for our joint work session on our Commission on Equity. I will turn it over to Shannon. There's commission members here, I'm sure we'll bring them in as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. It's good to be here with you this evening. I know we're going to be bringing in our commission members. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to have the joint meeting between the council and the commission to talk about, you know, the work that the commission has been doing in 2021, as well as take a look and approve the 2022 work plan for the commission. So it looks like we have all of our commissioners who are attending here tonight. So if we could do just a quick round of introductions, and I'll start with the chair. Chair Jackson?
Hello?
And we've got our vice chair, Brown.
I saw him earlier.
I did as well, and hopefully he'll be able to join us. Cliff Brown is right here, there he is.
Yeah, I'm here. Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Commissioner Clay?
Hello, hi.
Commissioner Sauer?
Good evening, everyone. Hi.
Commissioner Hart? And Commissioner Stolberg?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
And we are missing one commissioner, and that's John Hedgewood. And we also have our Lacey Youth Council member here, and that is Commissioner Joseph.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, good to see you.
You too.
So what we'll do tonight is provide a quick overview of the work again that the commission has been doing in 2021, which is the commission's first year, and then also talk about the commission's work plan for 2022. So I'm going to start sharing my screen. If I can just get a thumbs up when you all can see it.
Can see it.
Great. So just really quickly to provide some background, as this is the, you know, first year that the commission has been in operation. The commission really started a couple of years back with the Work Group on Equity, and this was in exploratory meetings with civic leaders from around the city of Lacey. And you can see all of the leaders that participated. So Dr. Thelma Jackson, Tam Din, Nam Nguyen, Mustafa Muhammad Ali, and Antonio Gallegos, as well as Bishop Lorenzo Peterson, who helped a little bit later on in the process. But this Work Group on Equity really helped lay the foundation for what became the Commission on Equity. And the Commission on Equity was established late or early in 2021 in January, and was tasked with providing recommendations on ways to identify and advance opportunities that will create a more welcoming community, to continue critical conversations on race and equity, seek greater participation from underrepresented community members, and identify existing gaps and barriers which would prevent full participation in government and public policy. The Work Group on Equity members were instrumental, like I said, in helping set up the Commission on Equity, you know, helping craft the ordinance, and then also helping appoint our commissioners by doing, you know, the initial review, and then having the final appointments that came through this body. And we just met all of our commissioners, and you can see them up here again on this slide deck. And I just want to announce that our meeting schedule is the fourth Monday of every month, and the meetings start at 5:30. And currently, they are remote, and will be in the city council chambers when we go back to having an in-person option, and that there is a public comment at every regular meeting, and that the Commission on Equity invites everyone and anyone to come stop by Commission on Equity meeting and meet the commissioners, and also provide some public comment. So Table A in your packet, as well as what I'm showing up here on our screen, is all of the work that the Commission on Equity has done since they started holding meetings in June through December of 2021. And I've highlighted a couple of them on here that we're going to go into just a little bit more detail. And I'm actually going to allow the commissioners to provide some updates on these items. But they are the Strategic Plan, so it's the Strategic Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, our meetings with our city council departments, the Lacey Cares Initiative Overview, the Community Engagement Listening Sessions that were held in November, our Indigenous Acknowledgements and Future Collaborations Work, and then a Juneteenth event. So with that, I will turn it over to Chair Jackson, who's going to talk a little bit about the work that's been done on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Shannon. Can you hear me? Do you see me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for that overview on the Equity Commission. We're one of the, we're the newest commission in the city. And we have had our work underway since we were appointed some months ago. And I would say that, as Shannon shared with you, that original discussion work group back in 2018, prior to the establishment of the commission itself, that group had some very general discussions underway. And then when so much tension broke out in the country, the issue of an Equity Commission really got a heightened sense of urgency about it. And so when the commission came into existence, there was so much more for us to think about. And as we have ventured into our work, into our work plan, into the strategic planning as part of what's going on in the overall city, we've been rather deliberate about trying to make sure that the issue of equity is front and center to everything that's going on in the city. Not that we're just a side commission with a side topic to be discussed, but how can we make sure that we are playing a significant role? And so the strategic plan that is in the process of being developed, we've tapped into a number of things that we wanted to make sure we had in place as we moved forward. So Shannon talked about the community listening sessions. And that activity was moved up a few months earlier than originally anticipated, because we wanted to have input from the community. We wanted to make sure that the issues that were out there were the kinds of things that we were looking at as an Equity Commission. As we began to work towards our strategies, our goals, and those kinds of elements of a strategic plan, we wanted to make sure we were in sync with the community that we were there to represent. And so over the months that we've been meeting, we've been discussing, we've been working, we've been soliciting input from community members. As Shannon indicated, we've been meeting with various departments of the city, trying to develop a good understanding of the infrastructure and how things work. And we've been working with the consultant that's taken us through the various elements of strategic planning. And some of those things we have completed, and some are in progress. But we're trying to bring forward everything we're learning, everything we're reading, all of the information that comes to us, so it can be incorporated into what eventually will be our goals, our benchmarks, and then our evaluation matrices. And we have a lot of more work to do. But I think, and I think the rest of the commission would agree with me, that we're off to a great start, that we are trying to make sure we are being the responsible kind of commission for which our purpose statement talks about, and not be the normal kind of commission. But to make sure that as direct representatives of constituents groups, that we're doing the best we can. And so in addition to the listening sessions that generated a great deal of information for us, we are in the process of planning focus groups so that we can dive even deeper in specific communities that make up Lacey. Because public input sessions don't necessarily attract input from people who don't ordinarily participate in those kinds of governmental activities, if you will. And so we want to go where that information is. And so the focus groups that we are working on, planning for specifics, so that, you know, we're making sure we're getting the voice of young people. We're getting the voice of particular ethnic groups. We're getting the voices of people who ordinarily would be marginalized and don't participate in these kinds of activities. So all of that folds in to what ultimately will become the goals that we bring forward as part of our strategic plan. And then the strategic plan for our commission meshing in with the strategic plans from the other commissions, and all of the commission's strategic plans meshing into the overall city's strategic plan. And so we want to make sure that we're meeting our purpose, the purpose for which we were appointed. And we're feeling pretty good about the direction we're going and the progress we're making, the internal organizational structure we put into place. And we've had very good support on the part of Assistant City Manager Kelly Baum, and her aide, Kelly Adams. And it's been delightful so far, and we get to know one another as a commission. And that's good, too. So things are coming up that we will become even more acquainted with the various cultures, ethnicities, and groups that make up this very diverse city of Lacey.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. And as Chair Jackson mentioned, you know, we started this process, and it's going to continue. So if you look into the 2022 work plan, this plays a central role. And one of the big items that the commission is going to continue to work on, and hopefully be able to come back before the city council sometime in the summer of 2022, with a draft plan to review and for consideration.
Do you need a motion? Why don't you keep going?
Mayor Ryder, there's a few more items that the commission just wanted to provide an overview on, and then we will motion for the work plan. Another thing, you know, as Chair Jackson mentioned, is we've been getting some overviews from departments. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Sauer to provide just some background and an update on that.
Yes, thank you. So, yes, it's true that, you know, over the few months, we've been getting some presentation from various city departments. So the Human Resource Department provided an introduction on who they are, you know, internal diversity and equity and inclusion effort that they're doing. So some of those were including like their recruitment and updates, training, development, policy reviews, and goal for future and ongoing DEI internal effort. And we also heard from Parks Culture and Recreation Department that also provided us an overview of who they are, status report on existing facilities, programs, events, recreational events, which I plan to attend next, the March 12 one, with a full-blown three operation there. So anyway, Parks Department also provided an overview of the upcoming and past Lacey cultural celebration. So let's see, Lacey Commission on Equity will be, actually, the Equity Commission itself, we will be participating in that culture event as well. So for our next steps for 2022, we'll be continuing with above presentation that we heard, that will be part of those, some of those plans. And the plans that we have so far, we'll have a community economic development presentation on BIPOC Business Training Program with Thurston EDC, which is next Monday, in our next Monday meeting. And we'll have a presentation by Lacey Police Department, which will include department overview and review of DEI effort. Also, Parks Department will be returning in April for discussion of social sports field allocation policy. And then, of course, other departments' presentations are also scheduled throughout the year. So those are some of those things that we have planned for upcoming months.
Thank you, Commissioner Sauer. And again, if you look at the 2022 plan, you'll see the department presentations continue throughout the year. So moving on, I know Chair Jackson brought up the community engagement sessions. And so the Commission on Equity did hold two community engagement sessions back in November. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Stolberg, as well as Commissioner Hart, to provide an update on that experience.
Okay, I might, I think I'm going first. So, yeah, we held two community engagement sessions. Um, so yeah, we held two community engagement sessions, one in November. And these were both held um at City Hall, and we had talked about having one at City Hall. And then having another at an alternative location. Just kind of considering access. You know, how many people would be able to get to City Hall, how many people would be comfortable coming to City Hall? Uh, but I think because of technology issues, um. Because we also were doing everything virtually as well, um, we ended up having them both at City Hall. Um, and they were. Educational for, I think, all of us, you know, hearing some of the issues. Um, what some of the the public thought about even just us being a commission. And then some of the things that they were concerned about. And then there was also the opportunity to provide feedback. With a, with a survey. Um, and so.
I think having it the hybrid, um, because we also had um community members that were. Able to to view it through Zoom. Um, on both days, I believe. I was available for the very first one, and most of the board was in person. Um, for both days as well. So um, having the ability that to have. Um, access online as well as in person was provided for both days.
Right, and there was um. You know, as far as the the issues that were brought up, there were. The one, and I also was able to attend the first one. And some of them that stuck out was just the issue of accessibility. And, you know, outreach that a lot of people. What, you know, don't always have access to the internet. So, you know, we're doing these things in person, we're doing them hybrid. Um, but not everybody has access to doing those. Another big one was considerations of people with disabilities. Uh, ASL interpreters was something that also came up. I don't know that we, Shannon, I don't remember if we have the capability to do that, if we're going to in the future, but. That was a concern that the public brought up. Uh, translating for other community, for community members who speak other languages.
So as part of the uh community engagement sessions, um, as uh the commissioners just mentioned, we heard a lot of. Um, feedback from the community and we organized them into broad categories. And you can also see in our twenty twenty two work plan, a more um exhaustive list of some of the items that we heard. Um, as part of those sessions. Um, but you know, they are not verbatim, and we do have the recordings available, you know, for individuals who are. Uh, interested in learning more about what was uh discussed as part of the community engagement sessions. But broadly speaking, um, what we heard a lot about were um leveraging and enhancing partnerships. Uh, increasing accessibility, um, as Commissioner Stolberg mentioned. Um, looking at our outreach and enhancing our outreach. Um, enhancing inclusivity, and then also looking at how we evaluate and benchmark the work uh that the the. The community, uh, the city and the commission is doing on uh community or uh diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. So um, you can take a look at the packet for more information. On um, you know, some of the ideas and thoughts and concerns that were passed on to the Commission on Equity as part of the community engagement sessions. Um, as Commissioner Stolberg and Commissioner Sauer and Commissioner Jackson and Hart mentioned. Um, this was one community outreach engagement event that the commission did, and there are plans. Um, for the commission to continue these efforts in a variety of fashions um in twenty twenty two and beyond. Commissioner Stolberg and Commissioner Hart, anything that you would add?
You reached that, yeah.
So, um. One more, couple more items just to uh talk about. Um, another thing that the commission is working on and starting in twenty twenty one and going into twenty twenty two. Is um some work on indigenous acknowledgements and future collaborations, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Clay for a uh brief overview of this work.
Yeah, so you all know about the uh mutual accord that was uh uh written and signed. In March of twenty fourteen, twin Nisqually Indian Tribe in the city of Lacey. And in that accord, it talked about uh about those, the uh. Uh, items to do to strengthen that relationship between uh the two governments. Uh, Native American Heritage Month, the proclamation uh has been happening in November. And uh so tribal member comes and uh. Accepts the proclamation from from the city council. And then uh initially in in the uh materials that we got for. The formation of the commission. There was talk about the uh viewing the land acknowledgements and um if there was. If if the commission could work with the tribes. Uh, and see if that that uh something. If it would be meaningful for to having a land acknowledgement before meetings uh in our government. As uh, as recommendations, we have in our discussions, we've talked about. Uh, continuing that the uh November of Native American Heritage Month, but. Uh, but to uh continue to review it each year, so the meaning, the the wording. Continues to be meaningful and not just a a rote thing. We would like to invite tribal representatives to meet with us so that we can hear. More of the day-to-day issues that people of uh might be having and. Seeing how we can recognize the history and the presence of our indigenous people. We heard it in the new museum of uh Jen talking about working with Nisqually and Squawks and in the dirtwork. And also in the art artwork, and that's, you know, that's a wonderful. Way in the partnership shows that that we're putting effort into that partnership. And then um, a- along with the accord, it said to. Uh, have the city meet in an annual joint meeting with the tribal council and the city of Lacey. And that might not be, I I'm not sure when that's happening, or it might not be in such a formal manner. But but be meeting the two in uh in discussing different projects. So um, we'd just uh like to encourage that. To, so, yeah, that's about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Clay. And uh, the last item that we wanted to just highlight um as part of tonight, before we look at the twenty twenty two work plan. Is uh a Juneteenth celebration, and I'm going to uh turn it over to our Vice Chair Brown.
Thank you, Shannon. The Juneteenth uh celebration has been a huge part of Thurston County and the Lacey community for a number of years. Uh, you heard from a member of the uh Fragu Harris Lodge earlier tonight. And that's a wonderful organization. We're excited to be able to collaborate with them on this year's uh Juneteenth uh celebration. Uh, it's scheduled for June eighteenth um at the rack. And um, so. In that, at that particular event, uh, they, you know, do barbecue. Um, they serve over four hundred uh community members are doing uh that event, and they do other um activities. And so we were excited to to work with them and partner with them. Uh, the plan uh for the year is to um work with them and to assist them. Uh, as they uh develop the activity and move forward to execute uh the activity. We've met with them on two occasions, and uh they've uh shared with us some things and some areas that we can be of assistance. With them to help them to enhance of this um event. And as we all know, this is the first year that uh it is a national holiday, so. They're excited and we're excited to be a part of of this event. And so a couple of areas that uh we are um planning to assist them in um. Include uh the area of communications to help them really uh be able to publicize the event. Uh, we can also help them uh to enhance history. Uh, through providing uh opportunities for them to present more history of the organization. Uh, music, maybe uh games, uh, they want to increase the number of games and activities for the uh. Participants on that particular day, and also the possibility of providing some educational booths. Uh, and helping them to identify organizations, uh diverse organizations throughout the community to provide uh information uh booths. And then uh, of course, city council participation, we fully expect uh the city council to be represented. And um Mayor Rider uh look uh for an invitation. Uh, to be able to come before the 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 um community and uh give some brief comments uh at the uh event. So that is the uh Juneteenth celebration, and um. It's a huge event in the community that I'm sure many of you are aware of, and we look forward as commission to be a part of it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brown. And so that takes us to the twenty twenty two work plan for the commission. And that is, you know, to continue meeting with this body um throughout the, you know, the year. Um, as well as the commission working on the strategic plan. That and doing extensive outreach connected with that, continuing to review policy items as they come before the council or the commission, excuse me. Uh, working collaboratively with community partners, uh taking on um some some projects like reviewing city recognitions, the the new city website. Continuing to work on indigenous recognition possibilities. Um, hosting focus groups. Um, beginning to work on a equity tool and a equity map. Uh, hosting additional community engagement sessions, continuing presentations from city departments. Uh, to learn about the city departments, but also to provide um input and feedback on policies and programs that might be created. Uh, in the works at the city, uh working on the Juneteenth event, and then also joining and partnering with other community events. Uh, such as the Lacey Cultural Celebration. And uh provided in the work plan is just a tentative timeline, and um that is the. Commission on Equities twenty twenty two work plan, and we are requesting uh approval of that plan at this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Commission on Equity's work plan for the twenty twenty two calendar year.
It's been moving second. Can you uh stop, Chair? Perfect. Moving seconded. Uh, any discussion? Go ahead, Councilor Vasquez.
I guess I just. I want to make sure that if there are ways for the council to support the work of the Commission on Equity, that. You give us a heads up anytime, because I would love to support this work. I'm really excited by the work plan and all of the stuff that you've been doing over the past. Several months, so. Let us know.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Well, before we uh accept this work plan, I just want to. Thank you so much for this, the 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 commission um for the work that you've done, you know, and. Couple of years ago, when I was working um to form the the work group on equity. Um, and then the the Lacey uh Youth Council. I had no idea that both would get started around the same time, and both would have to deal with COVID at the same time. And the challenges that that um has presented, it's just so hard to do. Meaningful work all the time by Zoom, right? I mean, sooner or later, um. It's about building relationships, and you build relationships in person, um, talking to people. Uh, you know, i- in the same room, understanding their body language. You know, talking things through, and and that's where the real work gets done, and and we haven't been able to do that. Um, not, we haven't been able to do that on the the Youth Council, and we haven't been able to do that on the Commission on Equity. And so we've done the best we can with the opportunities that we have, you know, and I I just. Want to commend you on on that work, um, because there's a lot of work here yet to be done. I mean, we're at the very, very beginning of the of of this work. And when I first got started in um this work in two thousand sixteen at the at the national level, at the Race Equity Leadership Council. As it was pointed out earlier on the discussion on on Black History Month. You don't know what you don't know. And there's a lot come to find out that I didn't know. Um, and so you have to be deliberate in wanting to learn. Especially learn on issues where where you may not feel comfortable learning about. Um, and having honest and real conversations, because my life experience. Is completely different than any else's life experience, right? And 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 we all go through life. With what we've learned, and but. It takes so much more than that to understand what a community is about. Because we all have s- different, such different life experiences, and we shouldn't be afraid. To understand where someone else is coming from. I mean, a good government comes from. Understanding where what what your community needs, and you can only stand, understand what your community needs. If you have empathy for for other people's point of view. And so this is all about making Lacey the the best community it can possibly be. And uh, that's why I'm I'm proud of the work that's been done so far. I'm proud that this council has recognized. That there's more work that needs to be done, that there are community members that may not. Be participating at all in our local government, um, because we don't have the tools in place. To reach out to them and make them feel welcome, and that's. Just not acceptable, right? That's not acceptable for me. And and so I really appreciate the work that we're doing. We have a lot of work left left to do, but and I know we're on the right track. It's gonna be so much better when we're able to meet in person and be able to talk some of these things through. And build invite the community and have, you know, better conversations, because it all starts with a conversation. Um, and uh, you know, and so it's, it's a good time to. To recognize where where we've been and yet the work that we need to do. And I'm I'm very proud of where we're at, and I just want to thank you for your commitment to making Lacey the best community it could possibly be. And with that, is there any other discussion? Motion, a second, to adopt this work plan. I'm in favor of that motion. Signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you. Thank you so much for the work you're doing. And I look forward to working with all of you um as we continue uh the journey ahead. And so, yeah, okay. Uh, next up on our agenda um is our hybrid council meeting status, and I'll turn this back over to Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor Rider, and I just want to say thank you again to the commissioners who are doing this work. I appreciate it, and I'll see you all on Monday. So.
And and Kelly too. You guys are doing amazing work. I'm so proud of you um and what you've done, and you've 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 had the respect. Uh, our our commission on equity, and and that's where it starts, right? And so I just, you know, Kelly knows how much I appreciate her, and I hope I tell you. Uh, how much I appreciate you as well, but um you're doing great work, and and we're really proud of what you're doing.
Well, thank you, Mayor Rider. I appreciate that. Um, so turning to hybrid council meeting status, I know this is a topic that has come before uh this council in uh several different iterations over the last couple of months. Uh, based on the Washington State's um, you know, lifting its indoor mask mandate planned uh effective on March twenty first. Uh, the recommendation to the city council is to consider uh offering an in-person option for city council. Meetings for council members as well as members of the public, starting on March twenty fourth, which would be the first meeting after. Uh, the the mask, the indoor mask mandate is lifted. Um, and I just want to make a note that that in-person option um. Would also include a remote option being available as well for council members as well as members of the public. And I am seeking a council direction on this item.
Oh, I would make recommendation to accept staffs, I would seek approval for staff's recommendation of March 24th.
I think that's a motion, so I'll second it.
Motion is seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm having a good night, Lenny.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Is the plan to continue offering hybrid indefinitely?
Correct, councilmember.
Yeah, I think that's good. You know, we just heard from some folks that said that we're trying to increase access to government. And I think continuing to offer a way to tune in remotely is a good way to keep going in that direction.
Yeah, you know.
It's given us the biggest crowds we've ever had at our meetings, so it definitely should continue.
Councilmember Cox.
Just wondering if if you could walk us through this a little bit, Shannon, on what that looks like, you know, what it's going to look like for, you know, are like council members attending remotely going to be on screen? How will the mayor know to recognize people? What will the public watching on Facebook streaming or Thurston Community Television? What will they see? How will it be different?
Councilmember Cox, we are working on some guides too that we'll be sending out not only to the council members, but also making available for the public as well as our staff that'll walk through, you know, what the process is like for both regular meetings as well as work session meetings in a hybrid environment for the council. And to answer your question, in both of those environments, it'll look a little bit different based on, you know, the the seating arrangement in the council. So in a regular meeting, you know, going back to the seats around the dais, virtual members will be on the the main presentation screen. So they'll be able to see what's being presented in kind of a Zoom, the same Zoom format as we are currently. So you'll be able to watch presentations and see virtual members all on that screen. And then in the work session environment, it'd be going back to the work session tables. And there is a smart screen that'll be in front of the work sessions that will provide the remote members again, access to see everybody at the in-person as well as for those in person to see everybody remotely, in addition to any presentations that might be shared, whether in person or remotely.
So going forward, there's going to be a a screen in front of the mayor that's going to be able to look on online. And so for people calling in or other council members for me to be able to recognize. And so it'll be, it'll be just like what we're sort of doing now, where I will be able to see a screen with, you know, options of people who who are council members who are online or community members that are online. So I'll be able to recognize that as well. So it's just a way, a different way of doing what we've always done, except I'll have another screen and in front of me to be able to recognize the online component and be able to answer questions and so on and so forth. Make sense?
Yeah, it does. And I think, you know, one of the advantages of continuing this is that it's going to allow council members who may be traveling potentially to take part in meetings, which I think is a good thing.
And and the public, right? I mean, we can have public calling in from across the United States who on a port issue that they didn't have the opportunity to be in front of us, but now we'll have the opportunity going forward. So, you know, it's it's one of the a few decent things that have come out of this is realizing the the options of of technology and taking advantage of that to have a a more inclusive local government for sure. And so.
You gotta find those silver linings.
Yeah, you gotta find those silver linings and this one.
It probably would have happened eventually, but it happened a lot quicker because we're forced into it. Yeah.
And so, and I also.
Speaking of, you know, travel and stuff, so it's no surprise you guys, you guys all know my brother and sister and and that whole, you know, stuff. So I'm traveling to California beginning of March for a little over a week. So this will help. I don't know if I'll be able to attend remotely even, but it's at least an option. So you guys need to know.
And we'll be meeting still virtually for the first couple of weeks of March. It'll be after the mask mandates lifted inside, which I'm really happy about, because I was really worried about how do I conduct a meeting when all of us are like this the whole time, you know, in in person. So I'm really happy that the mask mandate in doors is is going away. We can actually have a face-to-face meeting. I can see everyone, you know, figure it out. So I will be supporting this step recommendation as well. Is there any other discussion? Then seeing there's been a motion of a second to accept the staff recommendation. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. There anyone to post? Then that motion unanimously carries, which leads us to the end of our agenda. Good seeing everyone without objection. I'll call this work session. Hey, Shannon.